I don't want to speak too.
So I move that they be accepted as they were submitted.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have one minor typo. There's someplace where there's a capital O where it should be a little O. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we skipped that. All right. First, we have an appointment of zoning enforcement officers. Janelle Mullen, yes?
Janelle Mullen, she is the new code compliance officer starts tomorrow.
Cool.
So we'd have it under agenda to appoint her as the zoning enforcement officer. She's coming to us from the town of Mansfield where she is the assistant town planner and zoning enforcement officer for the town of Mansfield.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
This is for appeal purposes. Should she issue a cease and desist and someone appeal it to the ZBA or it makes its way to court that she was legally appointed by the zoning commission, excuse me, to serve as the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Janelle Mullen as zoning enforcement officer.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we need another one to appoint Robin Newton as assistant zoning enforcement officer.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Robin Newton as assistant zoning enforcement officer.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six, nothing, both motions. No public hearings tonight. The first application is 1918 of Natalia Balashevna, who is here for a site plan amendment for a change of use to a business. You want to just explain to us what you're doing?
Hold the stand here.
Name, name and address, please.
So that's going to be the name Luscious Breeze Dayspa.
No, your name.
Oh, my name, Natalia Balashevna.
Your address?
My home address, 335 Griston Road, Manchester, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. Now you can tell us what you're claiming.
So this is my first time ever doing this, sorry for any misunderstandings. So I'm opening the business there, Dayspa. It's going to be Luscious Breeze Dayspa. It's a quiet business. I will be running either by myself or probably there will be like maximum two employees, just performing facials, waxing and lash lifts. And this is located on the first floor. No construction changes in the premises. Not been planning, you know, or like in the future. So I don't know what else I have to tell.
Okay, well, you're here for a change of use on that property.
There's also signage thing, Dave.
Pardon?
There's a signage piece to it.
The sign.
Yep.
So because it's a center code?
So the main reason is the signs. These are new signs that are being proposed, which Design Review reviewed earlier this evening.
Yeah.
Initiated a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
The signage conform to the code for size for a wall mounted sign. If you go to exhibit three, there's two, one above the door, it's about, just on, it's 4.67 square feet. The other will be just to the left of the door, it'll be the light of, and it's approximately 2.18 square feet. So it's a small scale to the entrance of the business. The space was previously professional office. This is now personal service that's going in there.
And they approved both signs?
Yep.
Awesome.
Does it really hang down from the top like that?
So the only thing that actually, they approved both signs, but they asked the applicant to basically take the sign and mimic the arch above.
Oh, nice.
And fill the gap to push it up so it doesn't hang down like this. She tried, what she looked at was the, one of the adjacent tenants has a sign similar to hers over the entrance to their door, and it hangs down like this. But Design Review said, can you please, and she will work with her design professional maybe to change the shape to push it up. Changing the shape from a zoning code perspective for area, she's still well within what she's allowed and doesn't affect like she's not.
For square foot.
So staff is, it's okay with this. I've grown up just a quick favorable recommendation, just that administrative zoning permits are required. There's no lighting proposed with the sign, so this is fairly simple.
Do the other occupants and these tenants have the two signs?
Yes, well, the most recent one, if you recall, the interior designers that in photography studio you approved probably about two weeks ago, or, sorry, a month ago, they had two signs on the building too. And a few others have larger signs along with either directory signed by their door, et cetera. So this is, they wouldn't be the first that has two signs for a tenant location within, but they're keeping with the scale of others.
And Design Review was happy with that?
They were happy with this design.
They are, Coachins.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Okay, are we ready to take some action here?
Is this your first, is this a business that you're relocating?
No.
Or is this a new business?
Yeah, this is a new business. When I read the letter saying that the Dayspa is relocating, I was like a little bit confused. I'm working currently, but like starting the business, this is my new, new baby.
Good, good luck.
Thank you.
There's nothing here about our sign approval. Do we need it or is Design Review sufficient?
Sufficient.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 1918 of Natalia Balashevna, agent George Markatos, owner for a site plan amendment for a change of use to accommodate the proposed business, Luscious Breeze LLC Dayspa on the property located at 10 Jim Gallagher Way, with one condition that an administrative zoning permit is required for the change in use and installation of signage.
Second.
Second by Bruce. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes?
Talk to him.
Okay, all right. So I can leave?
You're free to go, you don't have to. This is an interesting process. You're free to go.
Okay, we have a new application, 1920. Ferg Jansen. For Burgers on the Bridge.
Ferg Jansen, 3 Foxden Road, West Simsbury. This is the last event at the bridge before it's sealed off. As you probably know, there are no flowers this year because construction starts on getting rid of Betty Hudson's house and doing the great development. Assuming the last grant came through, might, might?
Yeah, it's on fire.
Anyway, but we're not doing, so this is our major and only really fundraiser to pay for all the flowers and all the upkeep and the lighting and all the other things we do there. So we have done this for five or six years now. We go from 4:30 to 7:00. Beer and wine is served. We have a disc jockey with music. The local Stop and Chop this week of Simsbury does, takes care of Brian DeVoe does all the food. And by then, hopefully, things will slow down for them. But it's nice to see that Simsbury market doing such a business, but anyway. So any questions? We have tip stream people. We have beer and draft beer and wine and burgers and hot dogs and homemade desserts.
Go ahead.
Just for the record, this will be the last time that they go before you, should the commission approve under the new regs. Moving forward, this event will just be handled by a zoning permit with the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
The approval goes by the property, so what if a different group comes in?
Same thing, it would be a zoning permit to the zoning enforcement officer for a different group down there, for a temporary location.
So it's the town of Simsbury that's getting the approval?
In theory, it's the property owner.
We paid the fee and we were also applying to the order selection and asked to have it waived. That hasn't happened yet, but we paid in advance and just.
So Ferg, do I get this? There's no change in the format from prior years?
Exactly the same, the foreplan.
It's just the same event one more time?
Same thing.
Thank you.
And hopefully no rain. The rain date, though, is the following day if it does rain, but we're hoping for the Wednesday to have it.
Any other questions, the commission? I think this, this recommended motion should be modified slightly to, for site plan amendment for strike the a temporary liquor permits for one day events on the property because they can have up to 12 per year under this site plan amendment. Correct?
Actually, you have that as commission number two that pursuant to the regs, you can have up to 12 for this property. And just to follow up on Kevin's comment, let's say another event, another group wants to host an event down at One Old Bridge. The zoning enforcement officer does have the ability to forward it to the commission. So if this, if that seems like it's above and beyond the scale of this particular event, which may not be consistent with the action tonight, the zoning officer can refer to you and you can, you can require that a site plan amendment be filed by that group and then further details can be flushed out.
Because it's a different event.
That's part of the check and balance of the new regulation, which so far it's been working.
Great.
Okay, I want to make a motion, Mr. Secretary.
Still thinking about this one here.
Okay.
So approving the site plan amendment to allow this, then does it get so specific as to the, as to the times? Or, you know, do we really have to say the May 29th? Because it's really a site plan amendment to the, the site.
You could get specific on the times, the dates, or you could say, no, we're just going to grant the site plan approval. The only reason why I'm suggesting putting that in there, just because it came in specific this one.
For this event.
So that it's clear it was for these two dates in case anyone questions the signing or issuing of the temporary permit for this particular event.
And this satisfies coming to the, to get the permit?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to change it up a little bit.
Okay.
All right, I move to approve application 1920 of Ferg Jansen, agent town of Simsbury, owner for a site plan amendment for temporary liquor permits for one day events on the property located at One Old Bridge Road, being shown on the assessor's map as map H11, block 144, lot 007, and the adjacent parking lot in an old Drake Hill Flower Bridge, zones R15 and R40. This permit is for the Burgers on the Bridge for a temporary event located, approved on April 29th, 2019, with a rain date of May 30th, 2019, and the time from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m.
I think you said April.
Okay, May, sorry. Can't read.
Okay, you have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Jackie. Further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six, nothing. Thank you for. Okay. We are at the point of an informal discussion under general commission business from McLean.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Development Commission. For the record, I'm TJ Donahue. I practice law in Hartford and Simsbury, and I represent McLean Home. With me tonight are Tom Daley, who's passing out some graphics for you from Mylona McBroom. He's an engineer and a town planner. And we have Eric Daley tonight with us, who's with One Point Partners. Eric's a fellow from Avon, Connecticut, who now works for a firm, a Boston firm, who are specialists in senior living housing and consultants in the same. McLean now has an opportunity again and need to grow. We met with town staff and have a preliminary concept, which is before you now, and we're pleased to have an opportunity to review where we are and what we may need. Within a month, we intend to file for a site plan approval and also for a text amendment. Before we discuss the text amendment, I'd like Eric to come forward and explain to you how we got here. And he'll be followed by Tom, will tell you what it looks like and how it complies.
Did you get this? This is the letter.
Hello, Eric Daley, 105 Mill Street, Middleton, Massachusetts. So like TJ said, I'm a consultant for nonprofit senior living communities throughout the Northeast, and I've been working with McLean over the last year and a half to identify where they currently stand, both operationally as well as facilities, and how best to position them for the future to continue their mission for providing for seniors in the community. And over this year and a half, we've identified three major components that they need to address. First is they have an existing housing stock on the campus that is basically come to the end of its life and needs to be replaced. The second is that there's a certain level of amenities that a senior living community such as this needs to have in place for their residents. That includes modern dining facilities, fitness and wellness facilities, social areas such as meeting room, art space, things like that. And then the last piece is basically scale, so independent living housing. They need to add numbers in order for them, because they're very heavily weighted towards the healthcare component, much more so than most typical communities. So they need to offset that by adding housing. Where we came to the end, and I'll turn it over to Tom to talk about the actual physical components, is that there's roughly a 50 additional houses that need to be added in order for them to be financially sustainable to continue their mission moving forward. One of the other key components that Tom's going to address is that the two pieces that, that need to play into the actual physical design of it is as small a footprint as possible and centrally located because it needs to reduce the travel distance and have protected coverage for not only people in the new building, but the buildings that it connects to. So there's an existing apartment building called the Burke Holder, and there's existing villas and cottages that are adjacent to it. So as, as Tom shows, we're going to see a building with a very condensed footprint right in the middle of the current campus. Tom?
Just one quick comment. When he, when Eric talked about housing that had met, it's the end of its useful life, he was referring to a small number of the cottages. Those are the smallest units. The Burke Holder and the, and the main campus are all fine.
Thank you. For the record, Tom Daley with Mylona McBroom, offices at 99 Realty Drive in Cheshire. So as TJ and Eric indicated, we're really at schematic design. We're coming to you very early in the phase of, of our design phase. But as, so slide number one you'll see is an aerial photograph of the campus. And located right in the middle of it is the Burke Holder building. You can see right in the center, right above that is a red dot. And don't take it for gospel, but that's generally the area we're talking about. The perspective is kind of hard for us to pin down. To the right, we have Hop Meadow Country Club. To the left is the white, the white roof there is the McLean Home, the one that we most refer to. And then way up at the north is the villas that we came back before this commission about 10 years ago in there. So what you can't see underneath that wooded tree line is the cottages that Eric spoke to. Those are the kind of one, one and a half story buildings that go into that wooded area that, that several of those will be demolished as part of this, this application. The next slide is a site plan, a conceptual site plan or a schematic site plan that we've put together. And part of this project was really trying to bring the campus together. And, and both, we've looked at that from a pedestrian, from a vehicular, and then just a connectivity of the overall space. So as you can see here, we're kind of creating this campus effect by, by placing this building so they're all worked together. We are creating this general, this loop road that works you throughout the community. And then what you're going to see on the north side of that building, as you see this driveway that goes into the building, that's actually, you're accessing actually garage spaces underneath the building. So residents will have fully weatherproof parking underneath the building. We have a main drop off area with a large lawn area. One of the things that McLean doesn't have out there is that kind of open, you know, such a wooded site, but they don't still have a big flat lawn area that they can do events and have families over and everything. And one of the other components here we're looking at is, we're actually creating a pedestrian connection to Burke Holder. So the residents of Burke Holder will be able to come right into this building. And the first floor of this building is about 90% of that is actually just community space. Auditoriums, wellness areas, eating, dining places for not just this building to serve, but also the other facilities on the site. The next slide is a schematic rendering of what the building would look like. And what you will see at the bottom of the building, you see this kind of porch effect that's on that first floor, and that's that full amenity space that you're coming into. We're, we're looking at a formal drop off area, port cochere, you then would come into the building into the amenity space. And then above that, you'll, you're, you're looking at three, three stories of residential living above that. And what you don't see in this rendering is there's actually parking underneath. And then what you see is the blue roof there is the Burke Holder building and to the left is the McLean Home. And what I hope you're seeing is you're really starting to create this real true campus, campus environment. We're also trying to locate parking so it actually can be used all for all three facilities so we don't have these parking lots located throughout the project. The next rendering is a perspective from, from the golf course looking up into the project. And what you see is that brown area that you see at the lower area, that's actually parking garage. So we've designed, the architects have designed a building so you can have a parking behind it and you don't even know it's there. And what they did was they built on top of that with this beautiful outdoor space so the dining flows right out onto this grand plaza. It allows the residents to come out and look, have that beautiful view down through the golf course. So once again, that first, so the brown area is a parking garage underneath. The, the first kind of porch area is the dining and this outdoor living space. And then what you're looking at above is the three stories of residential above. And then we just provided you a cross section of, preliminary cross section of how that architectural looks at. And what you can see is there that parking garage is basically completely below grade. You have the community center and, and amenity space and those, those floors above.
Anybody's around for any questions that you might have? When we ask for our site plan, we're going to be asking in addition for a text amendment. We've discussed this with town staff and we've got some preliminary ideas that we feel it's important to, to talk to you about. They have stressed the need for verticality in these developments. In other words, you don't want dispersed older people walking further and further and further. You want to, you want to go up and you want to have elevators and you want to have parking under, which is in for the elements. So all of that leads us to a position where we, we do want and need the, for the, for the best benefit for McLean, we do want and need the four full stories above the parking garage. Under the matrix for this facility, it says that the height of the building shall be the height of the underlying zone. It's in the matrix, it says 35 feet. And if this were a PUD or a pad or anything else, which it kind of is, but it's not, it's a, it's a housing, it's a senior housing facility in a residential zone. But if it were any other kind of a zone, you would have additional opportunity to be higher. But because we're in a residential zone, it's 35 feet. And so we've tossed around ideas such as, to change the matrix from saying the maximum height is as required in the underlying zone, we'd say something like, and this is, this is your bailiwick to write the regs, not me, but the, these are the ideas that we had. As required, it would, we'd say, instead of that, we'd say as required by the underlying zone, except that in any zone where the lot is in excess of 40 acres and the location of the proposed structure's location is greater than 600 feet from any abutting residential, residential use structure that's located outside the facility, the maximum height shall not exceed 65 feet. So.
These are going to be 65 feet or so?
They'll be probably 55 feet, but.
Or four stories?
Yes. So 63 feet on.
On top of the ground.
63 feet at the top and you measure it. You measure it. So 60. But we relish the opportunity before you to talk about that and to let you interact with your staff on it. There's no live application, but, but that's the concept and that's what we think would be important to.
The height is a concern. I mean, this is a residential area. This looks like a hotel, you know, in a, what, R40 zone or something like that?
The rest of McLean looks like a hotel too.
They're not like this high, though?
No, they are not.
Okay. So I would like to see the scale to where the existing buildings are right now, the housing that this is going to attach to. This is just going to look like a monster standing out there.
The, what the town staff was telling us was, what the, the town staff's idea was, if you're 600 feet from any other house, then the scale and the scope is going to look differently than that. And I believe that, I don't think you'll be able to see this from any other property.
I would still want to see.
Well, you will from the golf course.
Oh, you'll see it from the golf course, but that's part of McLean. I mean, that land is McLean land.
One thing you could, you know, this is perhaps non-binding. Staff could suggest and would highly recommend that they look into, when there's a new tower proposed that goes to the siding council, they usually do what's called a balloon flight, where they'll hide, they'll put a balloon in the air at the height, the total height of the tower, and then go to locations they choose to say, what does it look like from the public right of way? What does it look like? So in this case, if I'm here and it's only one commissioner, but you'd want to see how this is going to impact this around. So can you really see it from other locations? There's ways that they can do that, and that's one demonstration other than, you know, some of the 3D renderings they provided you. It's just a suggestion, not.
600 feet is a, is a long ways, but it would be nice to.
See what that looks like.
Be comforting to look at.
We wouldn't resist anything that was a tool to, to see what you're getting.
It would be helpful to have a site plan that included.
Yeah.
The housing around delineated the perimeter of the actual property.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
See how many trees were on the edge of the property, where the other houses are relative to that? Just to get an idea.
600 feet from Washburn, is that what you're saying? Is that the closest neighbor?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I just pulled it up on Google, I think that's, and you have Schoolhouse the other direction. But I wasn't sure, that's, so I totally agree.
It's the last house on Washburn.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have some kind of context for the whole site.
Yeah.
We'll be happy to give you whatever you want to do the evaluation.
That would be helpful.
And what will you actually be measuring from? You've got, your roof design is obviously designed to limit how high it is because you've got going up and then you have, you have the two peaks and then a kind of level in the middle. So will you be measured, when you, if you did a balloon, would you be measuring at the, the top of the peak?
Starting route to home.
He's out of here. I did the same thing. I did it quiet, though.
I think he wants a place in here.
We, we, Mr. Gray, we'd be looking for you to tell us the rules.
Yeah, well, I guess I would want to see the top, you know, one of the peaks.
Yeah, when I've done it before, you start with the existing grade and you adjust it for what the elevation will be and then you fly the balloon up.
Yeah, but it's just a matter of which elevation are you going to use?
Do you measure height to the top of the roof, though?
No, we have a little point.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't measure the top.
Well taken, there's a slight difference. So your regulation says to the midpoint of a peak roof and the average grade around the building. But we, we'd like some clarity from this commission as to what, what height the balloon should be shown at for your, your visual.
And then are you talking, that's where you take pictures?
Your staff would recommend if they're going to ask for 65 to go on the text, that that should be the elevation off of grade where you're going to fly the balloon. Because then you really can get a sense, what does it look, because they, too, since it's to the midpoint of the roof, now you're talking about a structure, the peak could be 75 feet off the ground. So yeah, there'll be still something visible, however, I think 65 elevation, which is your building. building height elevation, how does that impact the areas? I mean, if you could see the balloon at 65 feet, then obviously you're going to see the peak of the structure and possibly a good portion of the roof. If you can't see the balloon, maybe the peak stands out, but you don't see that expansive roof. That was just, staff suggestion is not, you know, you can, these are kind of things that as they develop their application, they're going to take into consideration and how to demonstrate to you why one, either the regulation should be changed or the, should that occur, why the application should be approved.
Well, here, let me offer something else, too. Given the century, the application, I've recently been involved in a situation where we're looking at vertical, verticality and some things that we needed, they were elevated. We used a drone with a camera. And the drone's screen has the elevation of the drone. They have gyroscopes in them to hold them steady. They don't move around in the wind like a balloon does, et cetera, et cetera. I think that you're on the right track with the notion of a balloon, but I think there's a better technology out there than the drone.
What do you do? You fly the drone to 65 feet?
Yep. Set it at 65 feet.
Oh, then you can see the drone.
Yeah, the drone takes a picture with a camera. It has like a GoPro camera on it. And it takes either a film, a video, or you could do snapshots, JPG files, so you can zoom them when you get them on a computer. It's not very expensive.
He's saying, how do you get the height? Does it go out or down?
It's programmed.
It's programmed.
No, but I can see TJ, yeah, I can see what he's saying.
People selling houses in the neighborhood, they want to know what, where you can see that.
Yeah, they want to see how high it is.
Right. He wants to look from the ground to say, when I'm at Commissioner Elliott's house, can I see it? Or what can I see?
I think that's a fair question, but, you know, what were you thinking about, go home and see if you can see that balloon up there?
Yeah, sure.
From previous areas.
Bright red balloon or something.
And the balloon can stay for longer.
What we've done with that before is take pictures from very, we get pretty, is at which points we're going to take from, and you shoot a picture when you've got the balloons up and then it's...
Has any discussion been had with the close neighbors?
Not yet. We came to you first, but we worked with them well before. I mean, it was a water issue once 10 years ago and they're the happiest neighbors could be. And I don't think any neighbors can see it.
But, you know, our concern is...
I think I can see it from my house.
What's the topography where this is going? Because it looks like it sits even higher. But again, it's just a rendering.
The highest point on the golf course is on the 14th tee. And this is, this is about five or six feet lower than that as it rolls back down toward there. But it's a high spot of the, it's a high spot.
For McLean, though, so it looks like it sits...
No, it's, that's...
It's just the draw.
It's generally flat.
Thank you.
It's actually slightly lower than the...
Okay.
But it does fall off, and that's one of the reasons why the garage comes out of grade on the backside, because there is topography. So we're trying to not have to fill a lot, so we're playing with that. But, yeah, that perspective's slightly off. It's actually pretty flat out there.
Okay. That will all help, you know?
And it's a taxable structure, right?
Yes, it is. Well, it's residential units.
Yeah.
Very much so. And did you offer the approximate length of this building from one end to the other?
Mr. Gray. Well, the plan you have is one inch equals, I can try to do that for you.
Footprint was roughly 40,000 square feet. That was the number I had when I had the memory right. But just to give an idea of how large it is.
As there, to answer that question, so this also was, as I presented, the preliminary
to design review board earlier this evening, the design review had a lot of the same concerns about just visual impacts and how to really demonstrate if they're mitigating any visual impacts this development may have. So otherwise, from architectural standpoint, although it's very preliminary, they acknowledged it, they liked the kind of appearance that we present on the, from the golf course perspective.
Forty thousand square feet, like an acre?
Yeah, 40, well, it's 43,000 is an acre. Yeah, so that's a building's about an acre.
We think it's about 350 feet long. We're, sorry, we can't give you a better answer.
Ballpark.
Yeah, that's about right. If each of those parking places is 10 feet wide, you're...
Yeah. That 350 feet does not include the walkway which connects Burkholder. But see, the Burkholder, the whole group of Burkholder apartments will be connected by that walkway at the end, so that you're going to have a central corridor for the whole, for the whole campus.
And that's covered, right?
Oh, yeah, that's very much covered.
And it's just the one level? It's not, it's not...
We're evaluating that.
Okay, because it could go into each level of the Burkholder.
Yeah.
So it looks like Burkholder's about the same length. The buildings are roughly 350 feet, too, then. Well, you're making this work. I can see that.
No, it's about the same foot, yeah, it's the same.
Kevin? Bruce? No, I'd have to ponder this a little more, but I think, I like the concept. I mean, I don't, I really am a supporter of McLean. And I was in that Burkholder building just recently, delivering books to your door for the library. And it's a hike from one end of that building to another. I mean, it really is. And so, you know, the proposal is for a building that, you know, if you're an apartment dweller on floor number four and you're at one end and your friend lives at the other, it's a waste, but...
If people want to age in place, that keeps them in that location, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how will the use be different in Burkholder?
Other than the amenity space, the actual homes are similar.
Same, same concept.
Independent living apartments, yes.
Mr. Dalen's convinced me that, you know, McLean's our biggest employer and it's got a very significant community aspect, but he's convinced me that the independent living units for seniors without further significant amenities added will be falling behind the rest of the communities for that type of use.
The draw is having the amenities? Is that what you...
Well, that whole first floor, that whole first floor corridor is going to be amenities. It's going to be nice stuff.
Yeah.
But as a consultant, you're assisting other organizations in New England somewhere with similar issues?
Yes.
Are they coming up with similar solutions to all buildings that go into residential areas?
Some are doing an urban structure, some are doing an expansion, some are doing a new campus right across the street. It's really all across the board. And McLean is unique. It's, that's not cookie-cuttering by any means. There's a number of cookie-cutters around, so everything that we're talking about is completely unique to their situation.
And they have the space, McLean.
Yes, correct.
You know, other places might not.
And they have the need. There's a need in the market and they hear that, so they're responding to that as well.
Sure.
Dana?
No, just that site plan would help me, but...
I'll go back to the balloon height. I'd still like to see the peak so that I could see the maximum, I mean, if it's, you know, it's lower than that, it's fine, but I think we should at least see where the peak is.
Mr. Chairman, it's a big project with a lot of moving parts. We'd like anything that you got, that you want to, if you give to staff, we'll get any other information that you need as we get coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we got one thing here, it's this potential text amendment.
For Center Code?
For Center Code, and it suggested that we delete the public information notice sign for site plan applications within the Center. Because the bid's in a 15-day delay and you still have to hear it. So, anybody have any comments on their suggestion here?
I didn't understand the point. I mean, I just got a quick look at it and I couldn't spot it right now. What, why is that? I thought that was a citation from the existing regulation.
It actually says site plan. In existing, in the zoning regulations, you require public informational signs just for public hearings. However, in Center Code, they went as far as saying administrative actions, regardless if it's administrative action with a commission or it's a staff, if we're going to go down the consent agenda comment, both require the posting of a public informational sign. And because they cite to the zoning regulations, zoning regulations require that that's up for 15 days. So it just, it builds in a two-week delay for anyone who does, proposes a change in the Center. This is just a possible, this is something that we've experienced in the past to try to speed things up. The other thing that's, it's not on this memorandum, but we'll probably, we'll have this discussion in June, has to do with change of uses with the existing zoning regulations townwide and ones that don't have building expansion, parking lot modifications. We have something else for you, I'll talk about it later. This really is, it's a, an issue that keeps coming up as we're getting these applications. For example, the day spa, because a site plan was required, she actually filed prior to your last meeting, so she's been waiting, you know, a little over two and a half weeks to come here tonight for 10 minutes. So this would just help speed these applications along.
And that was the sign I mentioned to you the other day. I saw one somewhere and said, what's that?
Yeah. And this is just for the Center Code, just as specified.
And the public hearing, the informational sign for special exceptions would still apply. So if they're doing something that requires a public hearing, they'll still post the notice. It'll just be this, this delay that occurs with administrative actions under the code.
It also gives the public the chance to see that something is proposed. Otherwise, there wouldn't be any notice to anybody.
But site plans don't normally have that kind of thing, anyway.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it does right here.
Yeah, and that...
At the town center, which is one of the more critical places in town.
This is just the correspondence and just comments to the commission. If you want to keep it, I'm okay with keeping it. Just something, as I said, is a common complaint or just issues that we've had with application.
Well, Kevin, let's use this one that was before us today. I mean, today didn't require any changes. Today was a new business going in an existing building with just new signs.
No, no, it was the change of use.
Change of use.
I'm sorry, change of use.
But nothing changed outside of the...
Right.
...property.
But would the public not want to know that something was going on there?
The public would have the opportunity to be informed that something's going on, because obviously the agendas for the meeting are filed and they could subscribe to our agenda.
Email, yep.
TV right now.
And then, and then standing within town.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's been recent scurry of publicity where people are saying that they don't get, you know, there's no notice of what's going on in the town. I mean, and I appreciate that, all of these things, you know, but there was discussions in the community that, you know, how come we don't get notice of these things?
And then there's...
And so the less notice, notice we give, I think, it's problematic.
I guess I see the side of where it's holding up the business person.
Well, maybe we change it 10 days or something, but I think there should be some kind of public notice. You just don't go in one day and change it.
And we do, do notice if there's a, you know, permit for alcohol or something like that, they have to do that.
Where there's a public, where there's going to be a public hearing. But if we don't have a public hearing...
Well, a site plan amendment would be, well...
If there is a requirement for a public hearing, then...
Is the public going to do anyhow?
Then...
Right.
What is it?
They can't speak, right, they can't speak to it.
Oh, they can come and ask, but...
And just to remember, those are the kind of uses that, as long as they demonstrate the use, it's allowed in the regs and they meet any other kind of design criteria, there's limited discretion for the commission. It's, you're kind of required by law to say yes to administrative approval such as a site plan, a site plan amendment, versus a public hearing where you have, under a special exception or a public hearing process, you have a degree of discretion of whether, you know, the appropriate safeguards are provided for the area, et cetera.
Well, today, we did not have to approve the change of use.
For what reason?
Right, there was no requirement, there's no, it wasn't prescribed as a use, so it wasn't, it wasn't just a non-decision that we did, it wasn't just a formality. So should we not have notified the public that something was going on in that building?
Well, like you said, they are notified with our agendas being posted and then, obviously, today.
It's for thought, so if you want to maybe table this discussion, it can wait to next month or...
Yeah, all we're going to do here is talk about this and then we would make us...
You could say yes or no to staff. If you, you're okay with me filing a text amendment for this.
So this would be, we would love to have you file this as a text amendment, then we'd have a public hearing on our behalf.
Do I get this?
We're going to have a few of these coming up, right?
So you're going to have, McLean's obviously will be a text amendment coming up. And then we're, we're at the point where this next, we're going to shoot for in May to provide you the townwide zoning regulations, the rewrite. We have, I've been working with Robin and Glenn Chalder, will be getting us our graphics soon. So we'll have a real document to show you, not the very rough version that you received in the past. Because we're, we're kind of finalizing how to categorize stuff, group it in the right location, also asking a few questions to Bob DiCrescenzo on legal issues that we, the two of us as professionals saw that would need to be addressed in the current regulations. So that would be, some of that is, would be, it's considered a text amendment, but really it's a comprehensive rewrite, because that's regrouping everything. And there's some stuff in there that either is not addressed or is addressed, it's not a, it's not clear in the current regs on how to handle it. We'll go over all those changes one by one with you, prior to filing any applications to make sure the commission's okay with that. So we may do, let's say, like the second meeting in May or first meeting in May, may just be reg, comprehensive reg updates, where we'll have the document for you and then just go over all of that stuff. So that the commission, to make sure the commission's okay. Because one of the comments after last meeting, following up with Robin, was about change of use. In, let's say, townwide zoning, you have a, you have a building that has an as-of-right use or permitted use as-of-right, and another business wants to go in there, that is a change. However, it's a use that does not require exterior improvements to the building, expanding the footprint, changes to the parking lot or any other infrastructure supporting the use. Can the zoning officer sign off on just a zoning permit and rather than having them file a site plan amendment, going through, coming to the commission and doing, you know, potentially with some consultants to show, you know, to demonstrate compliance? Just, that's, that's our conversation for another time. It's not for tonight, because I want to show you the draft language before we really have that conversation. That's sort of the, the direction where we are now with our rewrite on the regs, which I'm kind of excited, because we also condensed it. We were down between 20 and 50 pages of your current regulations by condensing and getting rid, getting rid of some of the duplication that's in the regs. So...
That's great.
Not just smaller fonts.
No, 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 this is, yeah, this is, no, it says it three times.
This way, go look over here.
Yeah, point it over here.
Go look over here.
No, put it all in one location, utilizing charts to illustrate, you know, what's specially permitted, what's permitted as-of-right in zoning districts, so...
Where in this code does it say how long it has to be up for?
It refers to the zoning regulate, those townwide zoning regulations. That's where the 15 days comes into play, so the two-week delay.
But, but for the town regulation, that timeframe is specific to a public hearing notice, not a site plan notice. It's not the same thing. One doesn't exist, and yet you've taken the standard that doesn't apply and...
Used it.
But actually, that was done by the writers of the code. But having been there at the time, there was an expectation that there would be continued investment in updating our regulations and integrating some new concepts. I think that would have been one of those. I don't know the guys from Dallas who gave us the code, if they've been engaged here since, but... since, but do I also understand, then, that fifteen-day timeframe for site plan application is unique to the center code? It's not in the Hartford code?
That's correct.
It's not in the townwide code? It's only there. Thanks.
And there isn't a public hearing? It's just the notice.
It's not a public hearing notice. It's a notice related to site plan application, and no other, we have three codes, the townwide code, the Hartford code, the center code. It only appears in the center code.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think good sense suggests that we do something about it. That's real...
The center code, we haven't been overrun with applications.
No, but it seems like it's becoming more as of...
You get a lot of the administrative, you know, those little, but like tonight, that's what you see a lot of lately in the center code, and then maybe that sparks a discussion later about, as Commissioner Elliott kind of said, like, you know, is it time to start doing a housekeeping and really start looking at it? If so, you know, we do have some funds in land use studies that we can possibly retain the services of an outside consultant to, to look at the center code and see, you know, here we are, you know, time has passed, did we get what we wanted out of the deal? Or what are some of the other, you know, I'm just bringing one that's, from a processing standpoint, are there other concerns that the commission may have that would like, they would like someone to take a look at it? It's from a form-based code, I think, having a consultant that may have experience outside of either the valley or, you know, Connecticut area may give us like a, a good perspective on how to give a update, a refresher to the code.
I also would like to make sure we don't ignore the fact that the Hartford code and the pad all need somebody to put their eyes on them and figure out how to make them do what we want them to do, or get our zoning regs to be more coherent and consistent.
And not to lose sight of, it was only two months ago, we had the thing with the fellow that wants to have his distillery down here in the center zone, and the center code doesn't allow it, but if he had made the same proposal for the Hartford property, it's in there.
Right.
There's no need for a text amendment.
Right.
Or townwide.
There's an avenue.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that's another thing that we've recently seen.
Maybe, you know, I don't, just suggest, so we'll have your zoning rewrite, comprehensive rewrite coming in the month of May. The next conversation should be, as the chairman kind of alluded to, you have a few comment, a few areas of concern out there. Maybe pick which one is the next thing we wanna tackle, and then, like I said, while we have funds available, maybe get some outside consultant to look at it, 'cause I think all of us are very invested in the subject, and I think having a third set of eyes look at it may help us, you know, to move forward and to really do the housekeeping on this one.
Yeah, I thought we did set kind of a priority. We said the pad, Hartford, and Antifa.
Okay, I'm...
Yeah.
It's okay. I'm gonna go back.
Although, I do think the town center needs to take a look at, too, 'cause it really hasn't spurred the development that we thought. Of course, it was a tough time, but, I mean, the idea was you have prescribed zoning, and hopefully, developers will come in and say, "Oh, wow, I know what I can do, and I'll do it." It hasn't done that.
So far. Anyway, are we done?
Um...
No, no other agenda items?
No.
All right, well, I move that we adjourned.
Second.
Second. Donna, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry, six, nothing.